All right, good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock, so we will get started. Before we jump into the agenda, I want to welcome a pretty from Caesar to the council. We're glad to have you here. Look forward to the next couple of years. And everybody else, welcome back. Glad you made it. We've all received our formal oaths, of course, but which have been filed in the circuit court, but tomorrow we're having our ceremonial swearing in, and I'm looking forward to introducing each of you to the public. We have a few housekeeping items that require action, although we don't usually take action in a work session. This first meeting is different with these couple of housekeeping items. The first one is Resolution 19G01 to adopt Robert's Rules of Order and designate the town attorney as the parliamentarian. Is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second. That was Bill followed by Jen. Okay, discussion on the motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
I have a mayor have a question. What addition? Are we supposed to choose a particular addition of Robert's Rules or?
I don't know.
It's listed in there.
It is.
Yeah, mill revised 11th edition.
It's the most current. Isn't the revised, the little blue, yellow one that I have?
Like the one Sheila told me?
Well, so I guess we need a new one.
Let's say version if you have. I don't believe there's been a change. It's the 11th edition.
Edition, which has not changed since you received your book.
Okay.
Mine says 2004.
She'll even stop by and give up.
Yeah, that's.
Mine is yellow.
Sorry to derail.
I didn't bring mine.
I just wanted to make sure that I had the.
Yeah, so can everybody check and make sure that we have the most updated version, which is what, what version?
The 11th edition.
I think it's a yellow copy.
Perfect. Okay, formal discussion on the motion to adopt Robert's Rules. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. Next up is our election of the vice mayor. I will ask for nominations to elect a vice mayor. Ms. Baker.
I move Resolution 19GO2 to elect Councilmember Sheila Olham as vice mayor of the town for the term of January 1st, 2019 through January 31st, 2020.
Second. Yay. All right, so made by Jen, seconded by the chair. Discussion on the motion, anybody?
I am super excited to pass the torch.
You will handle the title perfectly. I'm excited to have you as the vice mayor. Absolutely. Other discussions? Unravel. I hope to have your badge to give to you here, but it's not here yet, so.
Congratulations.
You are official once we take this vote. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Six mayors, zero and one extension.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You will wear it well. Next week, we have two presentations that are listed on the agenda, recognizing Dale Brock and Lieutenant Mike Bird on the occasions of their retirements. And also, I wanted to let you guys know, on tonight's agenda, Town and Corporation Day is listed on the consent agenda. And a formal presentation is done every 10 years, and the next time that would be scheduled would be January 2020. However, we realize it's the 140th year, and we think it makes more sense to do the 10, every 10 years on the even 10 years. So staff has reached out to the Historical Society, and they are able to send representatives. And so we will move it off the consent agenda and have a formal presentation if I have council concurrence on that.
Yes.
So excited. Good catch, Vicki.
Thanks.
Okay, welcome.
I think it was saying for me.
It takes a village. Thanks for that. Okay, awesome.
Village.
We'll just leave that. We have a couple of public hearings. The first one is ordinance 18035 to authorize the encroachment of the front stoops of 701, 703, 05, 07, 09, and 11 Monroe Street into the Monroe Street Public Access Easement. This was continued from the December 11th public hearing to allow for proper notification of the new property owners. And I believe John Irish is here somewhere with the staff report. There you are. Good evening, sir. And John Irish is our acting director of public works?
No, he's our deputy director of public works for engineering.
I knew that.
Lucy Yates and I are going to do this together. I need your support. Essentially, this is an agreement that would allow the Junction Square properties listed there on Monroe Street to have their front stoops, which would be the steps off the sidewalk up to the units, encroach into a public access easement. And in the exhibit of the actual ordinance, you will see that it blocks basically 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. However, just as a note, those are very, very minor encroachments of less than a foot. It is also to be noted that this is into an easement. It's not into right of way. And the reason this comes about sometimes is in a case like this with these types of town homes with zero setbacks on the front, there's no way to know exactly where that construction will end up lying with the property line until such time as a built construction, a built environment that can then be checked by survey. So this will allow that to encroach, and it would not impact any of the maintenance requirements of the town or any other impediment to us.
Any, do you have something to add? Yeah, you look like you have something to add.
I would add that this encroachment is not into town property. It's into HOA-owned property over which we have an access easement to put our side block. I have spoken with the attorneys for the, for Junction Square. They have provided us upfront with letters of acknowledgement that they were encroaching that this process was going to be necessary. And the HOA documents do advise the property owners that there will be, that encroachments exist. And I was in touch with the attorneys as of today. We do not expect any issues with this. They have, they have an encroachment on the other end that we, that the council provided during the site plan process. So as Mr. Irish said, a very minor encroachment in most places, inches, a matter of two to four, five, eight inches.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for John or for Lisa on this one?
Sheila. Aren't these all residential?
Correct.
Okay. I just saw posting on Facebook that it referred they were businesses, and I thought, I don't think so.
Yeah, I did see that, but yes. And that's why we had to defer or continue because some of them changed hands or they closed before we could get to it, and we had to make sure the owners were aware. Jen.
Yeah, so super minor question, but I was just going to ask that. So if some of them have been sold, not all of them?
Yes, I can count. Four have been sold. Junction Square owns three.
And so does anything have to change in like their deeds or is there any, or is it because it's with the HOA?
It's because it's with the, the actual encroachment agreement between the town is with the HOA.
So it's really just one agreement with that? So yeah, it has a little impact on the rest of us.
Caesar.
Has the developer pulled out of the HOA yet?
No, they still, they're still operating the HOA.
So it's not constituted with just the homeowners?
No.
What's their exposure?
In terms of liability for putting, I don't know if they have calculated that for themselves.
Has anyone spoken to them?
The homeowners association?
Because they would at least have some representation.
They have, yes. Well, I spoke with the attorney for the developer who would be operating the HOA at this point.
Well, I'm talking about who's representing the actual owners.
I know, it would be at this point that we're aware of.
But don't they currently have representation on the HOA?
I don't believe they've constituted their HOA yet.
So there's people living there, owners, but there's no one currently on the board that are owners?
Not that I'm aware of. No. They do have to provide the town with insurance, obviously, and they are, they'll have to do that in order for the agreement to be valid.
So again, just for the record, the HOA homeowners themselves have no representation of that moment.
I am not aware of that. Now, they've been, you know, the HOA is the, the developer is the entity within.
I got that.
I have a question. So you said, I think, Mr. Irish, that, that encroachments are kind of inevitable or they'll happen fairly frequently because there's no way to know until the building's been built. Is that right?
I didn't, me to infer happens quite frequently. I'm just saying that it can happen because construction is not an exact science. They would actually lay out those built conditions with a survey, and if your people working on the job create a condition that may be a little bit sloppy or whatever, you can't control it that precisely, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Other questions for Lisa or John on this one? Or anything else to add? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our second and final public hearing is a resolution to consider a special exception, which is SE number 1805, to permit a home-based daycare with a maximum of 12 children at 537 Merlin's Lane. Son, Montessori, and applicant, I believe is here.
Yes.
There you are. Thank you, welcome. And I will call on Dave Stromberg, who is our zoning administrator, for the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Merkel, and welcome, new members of council. I look forward to working with you. So now I'm going to just briefly go over special exception 18-05, and this is a request for a home daycare at 537 Merlin's Lane. I'm going to quickly just go over how special exceptions work, why they're being brought in front of you, and why specifically this one is being brought in front of you. So the zoning ordinance has uses listed out three ways. Something can be allowed by right, something can be allowed through a special exception, or it's just an unpermitted use. Something's allowed by right, then it just, it's an administrative review that meets the standards of the ordinance, and staff is required to approve it, and it just goes through. With a special exception, that's a use that's generally compatible in a specific zoning district that gets a little bit more in-depth review. It also allows the town to put conditions on a use on a case-by-case basis. And then there's just unpermitted uses, which wouldn't be allowed in a specific zoning district. So again, for this item, it's a daycare use, and the property is a PDR, which is Client Development Residential District. So a daycare of up to seven children is allowed by right in a single-family residence. And this applicant does already have an existing by right daycare of seven children. And a daycare up to 12 children can be requested through a special exception. And that's what the applicant is requesting tonight. You can also have a religious facility with a daycare in it in the zoning district. So Herndon Methodist on Bennett Street is an example of that. But most of what you would be seeing is this case where it's an expanded, single-family residence daycare. So the property is located on Merlin's Lane, and Merlin's Lane is a kind of half semicircle loop that connects to Warchester Street in two different locations. It also has Hurtford Street that connects Merlin's Lane out to Warchester. And the property is a single-family house, like I mentioned, of about 2,400 square feet. And this neighborhood is all zone PDR, and it's all single-family residences to the south and west is zone R10, single-family residences, and Herndon Elementary just to the south. The property contains a rear yard of about 6,500 square feet. That's to be used as the play area. That exceeds the requirements for area, the play area for daycares. And it also has a single aisle driveway, and staff is recommending that that be used as the only location for pickup and drop-offs, not to have any pickup and drop-offs from the street. So staff believes that this meets the requirements for review of special exceptions, so we are recommending approval with the staff conditions. This was heard by the planning commission on December 3rd, and they're also recommending approval. If you have any questions on the application or any of the commissions that we have.
Sheila. Were there any community comments during the planning commission?
There was one email that came in to the planning commission that was concerned about traffic down the street. That would be generated by the daycare.
But just one?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Caesar.
So I heard there were currently, they're at seven now.
There are approved for up to seven currently, yes.
And that was going to be my follow-up in terms of impact, traffic, another potential five factors.
All right, you'd be looking at a total of 10 additional trips per day on that street, so 5:00 AM, 5:00 PM over the baseline.
Have there been any incidents, just close encounters, vehicles?
Not that I was able to find. I went back and checked for, since 2013, we've issued seven special exceptions for expanded daycares, and we haven't had any issues as far as traffic's concerned.
Any other questions or comments before we go? Sheila.
Got one other comment. Just, I'm not in this business anymore. My children are grown.
Getting married, from what we hear.
Yes, I have, my youngest is engaged now, and he is out of college. He's not a child, little child. But it is very stressful when people are trying to find daycare, and I commend people that take this on as a profession to take care of our childrens. They're growing up, and I wish the applicant well because if we're going to thrive in Herndon, we need to have some good daycare situations. A lot of people don't like to go to a commercial-type daycare, and they prefer the home setting. So I can see where this is on the.
Other comments or questions?
I concur with Sheila. It is tough when you, especially when you're far away from family, to try and find a safe place and that you feel comfortable living with your kids. It sounds like typically what we hear, our, our role here is to look at the impact of the neighborhood. We're not regulating the daycare itself, and that would be through the county and the state, is that correct?
Yes, that's all through the county and state.
Okay. So I'm guessing if we hear from any concerns, and I want to say this so that the applicant knows that this might come up, what happens if, I understand wanting the driveway to be the drop-off and pickup point. What happens if two families get there at one time? Are we concerned about any, any danger of that?
The idea that we'd rather have them kind of wait on the street until the other vehicle leaves so that the next person could come in and drop them off. So, I mean, especially if you have kids coming from both sides of the vehicle, we'd rather just have it be on the driveway.
Right, I concur with that. I can just see that being a concern of traffic. How would you mitigate that? And I guess also, it could be that some of, there may be up to 12 kids, but it may not need to be 12 separate families. There would be siblings. So that might mean there are fewer trips than we might anticipate. Okay, any other questions or comments?
And I think they have scheduled pickup and drop-off time, right? So it's not in the same time.
Yeah, typically, that's how most of our operations are.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. There are two items on here. One, I said number seven will be moving to the presentations next time. And number eight is a resolution to, a resolution to award contract for the Third Street Water Tank Painting and Rehabilitation. And staff is available if you have questions on that item. Jen.
I just wanted to ask, because I walked by that today, and have they already started?
No.
Okay.
We've laid a base today, I'm sorry.
Can't do it to a contract.
Or maybe I should say, what, did they start? Did they have a huge crane there today?
Yeah, that was APNT.
Oh. Doing that stuff. I was just curious, because I was like, I know that's on the agenda tonight. What are they doing? What are they doing over there?
Other questions or comments?
This is our water, water tanks in general. Are we ever going to revive the one in Alabama, or is it still going to be mothballed?
That's, that's a potentially.
We're still talking about that.
We're talking about that. That's something that we're going to see probably later in the year. We're going to come and talk to you about water capacity needs for especially H-Toc. And the Alabama Drive site could be a candidate for us to remove or replace with a more up-to-date state-of-the-art. And we're even thinking about maybe two minis versus one large. And so we're, we have a consultant working through that right now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
To be continued.
If you haven't gotten a chance to look at that contract, it's incredible. I need to get in the water tower painting business, because it seems to be very lucrative.
Okay, we've got some discussion items. This, actually, just one this evening, and this is starting off budget season. Well, I guess not starting, we're bringing it to the public arena here. Bill Ashton, our town manager, is going to give us some background, and we're going to try to give you some guidance on some of our money.
And we have John DeSella here tonight, our budget manager. If you don't know John, he's right behind you, and he'll be here to give you some expert answers to any questions. Unfortunately, Jenny Tripoli was getting quite ill late in the day, and I sent her home. So any questions that might be under Jenny's lane, I might just take and get back to you this week.
Jenny's our finance director.
Our finance director, yes. So I just didn't think we needed Jenny getting more sick and/or getting other people sick in the process.
Good call.
So.
Thank you.
All right. So as you know, in previous history, what we're trying to do is set up a, we want to bring back to you next week, take from you tonight, a consensus of items that you want to take, philosophical items you want to take into our budget development, so that we can put together a budget resolution that you will give to me as my guidance in developing this year's proposed budget. We're going to go through the schedule here in a second. Just wanted to just remind you that we are still operating under the vision that you all adopted, the honoring people, the enriching lives through arts, entertainment, celebrating community spirit, cultivating a sustainable environment, and championing business technology. And we are still operating under that as we are starting to put together the department budgets right now. So actually, the budget, as we were alluding to a second ago, has already started. Departments have actually turned their first cuts in for the main operations, the, the normal operations and maintenance that we go on from year to year. This will obviously be shaped as we move forward. Your budget guidance is part of that. Just to remind you, a few, a few things, under the Code of Virginia, I have to deliver to you a draft budget by April 1, and we have to be operating under a budget by July 1. So those are the two drop-dead deadline dates. This year, we have no looming trips to New York for bond ratings, so, so we don't need to have a budget in hand at a particular earlier date for an, for an informal reason, but, but still. We're here, here's the schedule, January 8th, we're starting to talk about it here tonight. Hopefully, the goal out of tonight is to get you all to a level of consensus on certain philosophical elements in the budget, so we can put together a budget guidance resolution to design the budget towards, and that would be adopted hopefully on January 29th. In the meantime, we're going to start working the scrubs with the departments. What do you truly need, what don't you need for next year for just the basic operations things, as we start infusing your philosophies and your priorities into this budget at the same time? When we get to about February 11th timeframe, that's where we do our two-by-twos for our two newest members. Two-by-twos is we bring council in two at a time, sits with the budget team. I will go over pretty much where the expenditure side is shaping up. We won't have a complete revenue picture yet, because the revenue numbers will still be a few weeks away. But we're able to start looking at, you know, is this kind of where you want to start heading? Is this where you want to be? It's testing the waters to get, to get your input in a very one-on-one personalized setting with the team. By February 12th, take your budget input, we have our first public hearing where we get budget input from the public. Now that said, we get budget input all the time via email, but this is where we actually have a public hearing that we say, please come here, talk to council. You tell us what, what you want to see in your budget. Historically, it is not well-attended. You might get one or two, maybe three people to come in at this early date, but this starts the very public face of the budget. By February 19th, that's when we should have our revenue projections. That's where the fun starts, because we have to take all of these expenditures that we've been working with and make them comport to the revenue. We have to balance this out. March becomes about balancing the budget, so we can get the thing to print and get it in your hands by that April 1st deadline that we spoke about a few minutes ago. April 1st, it'll be released to the public and to you all. You will budget, you'll review it at that first work session in April. We will, we'll go deep, we'll do a deep dive on it. We'll take your questions, we'll talk, we'll actually, even though we talked about marking it up on April 16th, it truly, if you have issues right then and there, we start inputting them into the, into the document. April 16th, we have another markup session, and then we have a public hearing, obviously, on the 9th, and hopefully we adopt on the 23rd. That's, that's our targeted goal, and we're going to advertise for that goal. So the budget guidance resolution itself. Some things I was hoping to do is kind of give you some highlights of where we are at a very high level, so that, I'll catch up to you, because I can't read all this backwards. That's why I'm going to break. Catch up to me here. Revenue growth drives everything. As I said earlier, we're going to wait until we get the revenue back from the revenue estimates to really start getting into the balancing portion of the budget. Everything up to then is a wish list. We truly get, roll up our sleeves. Revenue growth, as you will see, as we're going to talk about in the later bullets, is truly, the, the one thing that has really constricted us over the past several years, our growth in the budget as far as revenues goes has been very minor. As a matter of fact, our actuals over the past two years, audited actuals, we have, we've constricted less, about a half a point. Now, that was, this goes to show you how close the margins were playing on revenues. Case in point, what drove that constriction I'm talking about? It was losing $100,000 because we had four rainy days at the Herndon Festival. It was, it was getting less than market rents down at 397 Herndon Parkway because we lost a couple tenants, and we put one back in, they negotiated a deal, and that was the best deal we had on the table. We lost a little bit there. It was, in some senses, we did a, we changed a budget allocation. We took a stormwater management grant and put it into the capital reserve fund to, because it funds capital, and that's really where it should have been. So we made an accounting change, and that caused revenues to show a little bit of a, of a negative year-over-year actual growth. But quite frankly, over the past years previous to that, we're talking maybe a minus one, one and a half to 1.7% growth. Pardon me?
About two.
About two?
Two, by average.
Okay. About 2% annually, okay? That's about where we're sitting. That is the growth in all revenue sources that we, that we have. Transfers out of the revenue fund are another big driver. We pay capital out of our general fund ongoing revenue, and so to the tune of about $1 million a year. Undesign fund balance, short-term debt have been used to balance certain elements of this. Now, undesign fund balance, it's not as scary as you think. That's based on B-Pole returns, where we try to, is from a philosophical perspective, we give a certain percentage of B-Pole, we consider an ongoing revenue source, but then we take a certain cut above that and treat it as a one-time revenue source, so that in case we get an Amazon Web Services deciding to move, God forbid, across the toll road, that we're not caught short. But we use that through undesigned fund balance to then fund capital the next year. So it's, that's kind of what we're talking about here. It's not, it's not us paying with credit cards, it's us taking what we got a little bit extra of last year, scrolling it away, and then paying for it in the next fiscal So given the tight rates or tight, tight growth we've had in recent years, we've, we've tried to squeeze as much as we could. Since I've taken this job, and we've talked about this before, we've updated our financial policies. We've, we've tried to reclassify positions as asked, they're supposed to ask you for new positions. We've tried to take ones that have been historically frozen and release them in a different context for a different use. We have, we've really honed in on lifecycle maintenance as part of a cost of ownership, that this is part of the cost of operations, and we're still in process of doing that. We're going to see even more of that this year, but that is something we should really try to work with. But the biggest one we've really tried is the right sizing of the budgets. We found redundancies. We saw, we found we're fuel, we were double budgeting for things like fuel oil in certain elements of the budget. We were able, through, and actually, it was the addition of Munis to the mix, we were able to, as a budget team, put the expenditure counts up on the screen and drill down into where they were being spent, and we could see that there were redundancies that jumped off the charts at us that we've had for years. We've eliminated those redundancies to create more efficiency, but, but as I, I think I've alluded to some of you in the recent months, I'm running out of rabbits in that hat. I mean, because we've done a pretty good job of diving in to find where we've had those, those secondary, where we're budgeting in two places for the same thing, and we got rid of them. So that's happened over the past couple of years. This year coming forward, we, we have identified some areas where we're going to have some ongoing, where we might have some challenges. The biggest, without a doubt, is healthcare. We are the only jurisdiction that hasn't seen a healthcare increase in three years, when other jurisdictions have averaged 9%. when other jurisdictions have averaged 9% over, and that's across the board. We did an analysis of every jurisdiction in Northern Virginia with their, what's happening with them, and they're averaging about a 9% increase over that, during that timeframe. So that's number one. Second thing where we're going to have some issues, where we have to pay attention to when we're developing the budget, is we're in a zero unemployment economy. Northern Virginia is virtually zero employment. We need to attract, retain people, especially in public safety, where the county has done things for their public safety employees two years in a row, and we have not kept pace. We have kept a few percentage points off. I'm not saying that we've seen that effect yet, but it's something we need to pay attention to. We have lost an officer to Fairfax, we might be losing a second officer to Fairfax, we are losing two.
Yeah.
There are a lot of reasons to go to Fairfax, large department, more opportunity for growth, more opportunity to do different things. You can't be on a SWAT team in Herndon, you can't be in Fairfax. I'll be, just go to Polish, please.
Don't get me out of here.
There could be a lot of reasons why they're leaving, but we need to pay attention to pay them in one month, and that is certainly something.
We don't need to give them another reason to look.
Funding lifecycle maintenance costs, what I just talked about a few minutes ago, trying to add, where we used to treat vehicle replacement as a capital expenditure. Well, if it's a new piece of equipment, that's a capital expenditure. If we're replacing an old piece of equipment, that's a cost of doing business. I mean, we had, so we're trying to bring that into an operations model as opposed to a capital model, and so we're going to be doing more of that this year, so here we see some of that. You got a question?
Yeah.
Go for it. Even leasing or purchasing, we've treated, leasing has helped us do a lifeboat to some of this, where we've tried to, we've pulled some out with leases in the past couple of years, but even outright purchases, we would treat it as a capital item as opposed to part of doing business. And so one of the things we're working with, our largest part of the fleet is down at the shop, and I'm working with Tammy right now on creating predictability year-over-year of what vehicle replacement, replacement will cost. And that's something we're going to continue to work on this budget year, that is going to be an ask, that we're going to have to try to find a way to fund more of, because we've got to get it out of the capital side of the house. It doesn't make any sense over there, it doesn't belong there, it needs to be in operations. The other thing we've all talked about is looking at our cost recovery model and marketing rec. If we drop their cost recovery model down, that's going to be an ask of the general fund to bridge that gap.
So right now, we ask them to recoup 75%?
75%, which we, which historically we don't.
Not get that high.
Yeah, we're, what do you think?
Between 68 and 70.
Yeah.
Jill has been telling me that's too high the whole time we've been on council, so.
And quite frankly, we're doing other things. The meeting the mayor and I had with Fairfax County, where we're talking about expanding our low-income scholarships over there, that's putting an additional burden on them, and then still keeping the order of the same cost recovery model puts them in kind of an impossible position. So there are lots of good reasons to move this, that being one of the ones that just jumps off the page to me, but it's going to be an ask of the general fund to compensate for that loss in revenue, if we're doing that. So that's, again, that's another big ask that we need to be cognizant of as we're going into the budget. So what these next two slides are, is just some of the things that were in the past two budget resolutions. You know, continuing funding the 2035 Vision Day, the downtown redevelopment plan, making sure that we're preparing ourselves for Metro. These are, these are things that were important to you over the past couple of years that we, that I'm just throwing on to the table for discussion, that is this something we want to continue to be targeting for? I'm assuming so. Continue focusing on technology, and not just technology, but focusing on changing the way in which we business model against that. What are our processes look like against that technology? That's something that we're doing heavily, we're doing some heavy work at CD at the moment, trying to take a look at that. We have some work over DPW, we're looking at that. Again, applying technology, but changing business processes to be a little bit more, to leverage the technology to a better effect. In the past, you've commanded me to maintain a competitive employment, be competitive in the employment market. You've also commanded me to keep strong financial oversight and strong sound fiscal planning. I'm assuming none of these are really going to change much, but I'm just putting it out there for your consideration.
We can always ditch Metro. No way, I'm kidding.
No way.
Go on. No, I think that these are obviously still important to all of us.
So that, to me, is, I'm just trying to set the table for where we are, we have a limited revenue growth area. We have these other asks that are going on, that we're going to have to do. Is Sydney's issue something that we definitely want to take a look at, and where is our tolerance for that in a lie? And it's now really for you to discuss and kind of give me some guidance so we can put a resolution together. Again, I always felt uncomfortable writing the resolution to hand, you know, when it was handed and then kind of mentioned, and handed back, I want you all to have more of a say in this.
This is just my gut initial response, so I may completely be wrong, but I think this is kind of a twofold thing, right? Certainly, I haven't seen it yet, I'm assuming the council will do some sort of strategic planning to identify what our initiatives are going forward, and there'll be some sort of increase in budget required to that. What would help me, and you said it a couple of times, you squeezed for the last three years, no rate increase. If you could wave that magic wand, right? Give us the information from the troops, from the trenches, what's not been addressed and that's painful. And if you could have that magic wand and just, here are my top bits, then that would help us align what our outcomes might be. I mean, unless that's out there, I haven't seen it, so if it's out there.
Well, we have the vision statement.
The vision statement, and then.
Not just the one pager.
Yeah, but we also have a staff plan underneath the vision too, that talks to, what are we doing, what is our tasking to advance the vision?
Right, it's more than just the one pager. So can we make sure that all of, that all of council gets that fresh?
So let me also say it a different way. Where is your exposure in terms of us losing police officers, people that provide the service for them? That, I think, would help me understand.
Right out of the gate, I would say, and we've identified them here, public safety is one, when we have a series of retirements coming up there where we have to recruit.
How much of the percentage increase would you need to resolve?
And we will look at that, and we'll get that back to you. Just to put a finer point on that, it would be better to recruit an already Virginia certified officer, because we can get them on the street in two months as opposed to 11 months, which we send them to the academy. And the standard, and one thing that I will, that I commend Chief DeBort, and I support her wholeheartedly, in all of this, she will, she refuses to discuss lowering quality standards. We don't want to lower quality standards in our police force, I think that's too important, and I think that she's a 11 o'clock news, and thankfully so. And so I think that would be the number one. Number two is this life cycle, trying to straighten out our vehicles, and getting a better, better sense of how we do our vehicle replacement, and getting it into the operations side of the house as opposed to off the capital books. Three is, what are we doing long-term with the infusion of general fund revenues into the capital improvement program? And can we then do big things that way? Or is this something where we need to have a bonding discussion? Do we need to have, and right now, we have Davenport looking at when our bonding sensitivities are, when can we do another issue, what are we retiring down?
Can you explain what Davenport is?
Davenport is our financial advisor, it's a company that's based in Richmond, they do most of the jurisdictions in Virginia, they're solid. As a matter of fact, when we were doing the, when we were seeking our AAA bond rating back last, early last summer, they are, they have a foot in Virginia political realm, and then they have a foot on Wall Street, and they really ushered us through that process. And I attribute equally as much credit to them for the AAA bond ratings, I do the work of Jenny, the work we did on the financial policies, the work council's done over the years with conservative budgeting, all that all came to play when we were up in New York. So, but Davenport's also looking at that question right now. Those are the big things off the top of my head. I think we've done a pretty fair job of juggling the priorities on the budget. As a matter of fact, one of the things we try to do is how we make the team up. Since I've taken over as manager, we have brought big department heads and small department heads together on a team, so that we would have a different look. We'd have a department head that, like for instance, last year was DPW and the golf course. This year's going to be police and a small department to be gained later. We're still doing that.
I just got my notice that year.
Yes, you did. But that helps us get a line director sitting there, helping go through what the priorities are, and also gives the directors a chance to look at things beyond their department and prioritize beyond just them. They've done a real, that last year, especially Gene did a really good job in making sure that the priorities were recognized, that was, we were in the budget meetings, and he checked, we challenged, we challenged, we make the directors defend, and we truly try to give them what their top priorities are.
Other questions or comments? I have some, but I'll wait.
Just one last comment. Philosophically, I'm an optics kind of guy. Kevin, just for what it's worth, that's why.
Jill? No, I was, oh, okay, sorry. Anybody? So I just want to throw out there, I think I planted the seed a couple of years ago, I don't know if it was last budget or the budget before that, but the council since 2010 has not changed the real estate tax rate. Now, we have had the benefit of our, you know, in 2008, everything tanked and our property values have raised, so people have paid more, but the rate has stayed the same. And I believe it was 2011 or '12 that we raised the meals tax by one penny, is that right? We haven't done that. I don't know that that is sustainable to continue never looking at a tax rate, and I tried to plant the seed a couple of years ago, that we take it seriously, and if we need to raise the tax rate, you'll know, or the public will know, it's because we have items that our departments want, that our citizens want, that we're willing to pay for. So I just want to throw it out there, that I, it sounds like we're getting to the point where that may be something that we need to seriously have a discussion about.
I think so. I'll be honest, you were in the meetings in New York with me. That was something the bonding rating meetings asked us about. They almost dinged us on not looking at tax rates in seven years. I mean, that, they were kind of looking at us, would you do it if you had to? That was a direct question.
Yeah.
And, and to that end, I just want to, I would be remiss in not counseling you all, and Fairfax just raised last year. I'm not sure if Brian has the story for us this year. He and I talked, but he's holding that card close to his vest.
Well, I know that, I think that we have to be, if not the only, one of the only jurisdictions that hasn't raised our tax rate at some point in the past decade, so I'm not like excited and ready to like run out and do this willy-nilly, but I do think it's a discussion that we need to have, and I think that with, if we are spending the money wisely on things that people want, it's going to be our job to get out there in the community and let people know why, why we're looking at this and hear what they have to say.
Jen? Yeah, I think that's a great point, because I do think we've been really lucky to be where we're at, and if I remember correctly, maybe this is a more John question, property taxes are something like 60% of our revenue that we bring in? It's a really high percentage, right?
It's a high percentage. It's our single largest tax.
Right, right. So by moving that needle, and obviously I know you'll do analysis for us if we move it a half a point, like.
Oh, without a doubt.
What kind of revenue that brings in, but it does feel like we're probably that honeymoon is over with not having to raise that tax, and potentially other taxes, but that one in particular. Anybody that hasn't spoken yet, have a comment? Are you, you're in now? Okay.
Yes, this is what I meant. I was doing this while I got.
You got to answer that.
I know, especially at an auction. Yeah, I know when I first, when Lisa and I first got on council, there had been several years they hadn't bought any new vehicles, and we were slammed with having to buy vehicles, so that, I mean, the joke was the police were in a hyper suit and the car ducked, I mean, I know that was a real joke, but, you know, we just can't let things go that long, whether it's the trucks or the vehicles for the police, what have you. So I'm glad we have that on our system.
And as a matter of fact, if I can just, to find our point, that is a routine commentary at the budget tables, we're not kicking cans down the road here.
Exactly.
Because pretty soon you end up with a big pile of cans at the end of the road.
We did that.
So that's something that we've very, both that and as well as building maintenance is another one we've got to tackle at some point. We can't keep deferring maintenance, you can't keep deferring things because you're going to get a pretty big build-out field. And so that's what we're trying to do, is get our hands wrapped around this sooner rather than later, to get this put into a more systemic way where it's there.
You briefly touched on, you know, doing things with the community center, and I know that, I know two young people that because when there were budget cuts and we took away the after-school program, that affected those young people by getting involved with the wrong people, and they were involved in that program, which means you're overworking our police, because then you have all those issues if our kids in our community don't have safe places to go. So that's why you have a community center. It is not World Gate, it is not Goldstown, it is a community center. So, you know, I think we need to look at that, and over the years, even prior to my being on the council, I've heard more people every year come in and talk about the programs they like, and when things were taken out, I heard people outraged. Like, I was there in the audience when the council tried to eliminate the spring and fall cleanup. A lot of people think that's kind of a big deal, but it is a big deal. Think of the neighbors you have that might not be able to afford to get rid of stuff, and then they're going to pile it all around, and it looks awful, so.
And in fact, we're not only not, we're not only not taking that away, we're actually looking at ways to do it more efficiently and better.
Yes, we have been.
Well, I mean, this next upcoming budget year, we're looking at new ways in which to do that, protect the workforce, and do it in a more sane way.
Right.
So, but it will, it still will exist moving forward.
Yeah, you briefed us on that a bit, but yeah, those things really do, in the big picture, keep the town looking cleaner. It might cost us a little, but then it's going to cost a lot more if you got to send the enforcement out, whether it's the kids getting in trouble or the job piled up in the backyard, so, you know, it just makes for a better town.
Bill or Sydney or Pretty, do any of you guys have anything?
I just had the one thing that, one of, I was at the finance forum in Richmond.
I'm sorry?
It was challenging, as always. One of our speakers who's brilliant and confusing, Jim Richenball, I think is his name, said that we're in a, we're in a special time right now, because the federal government is essentially giving us all the responsibility, it's devolving, and we are, the state government is shoring up its rainy day fund, we've already shored up ours with our increase in how much we want to keep in reserves, and part of that is because we know that if we get in trouble, the federal government is going to be unable to help us the way they did in the next, in the last recession. So I think maintaining and making sure that everything is where it needs to be is something we should do now rather than wait.
Well, it's a mixture of things. It's those policy changes y'all made last year will be now cascading buckets of reserve money for various things, and then finally the undistinguished fund balances is the fund flash resort. But it's also, it's little, little things like the budgeting, the tight budgeting we do year in and year out, it's trying to get the vehicles in a predictable, replaceable fashion. It's doing those things, applying those best practices, mixed with some of the policy changes I think help us out a great deal. I'll go one further, not just that, it's funny, I don't know if you saw the Virginia Town and City articles a few months back, John brought it to my attention, and I went back and read it. We're not the only jurisdiction in the state that has had slow growth in revenue. It is endemic across the state. It's all jurisdictions are seeing this, and so we're just, we're just wanting the larger picture as far as that goes as well.
Pretty, did you have a comment or question? I don't want to put you on the spot, just want to make sure you have a chance. Okay. Say sorry, I think I saw your man.
Yeah, okay, sorry, just because I'm new to Benidorm. I just want to make sure we are going to look at all other options of revenues. I think, I've got mixed feelings in terms of this whole sort of solution. I think this is a good example of why we should always have even a minimal increase year-over-year, I mean, because it does put us then in a situation where we're going to have people that aren't fixed incomes, that cannot afford even what we're proposing. I mean, there's a lot of those people just hanging on, and I think we really have to make a concentrated effort to look at other options, because that really hits home. I mean, especially if you're a senior and you're just barely trying to stay in that home. You know, I'll bring it up, meals taxes, just whatever other sources of revenue, I think those are more for me tolerable for other people, because once you start talking about the real estate, it's really, you know, frightening for a lot of us.
Well, it's interesting, because that's kind of why cautionary, the county just did, that was kind of a coded cautionary tale to you, that that's probably not where you'd want to go, that's your political.
Look, and I'd rather have that, and this is just me, my opinions, and again, if we're not, if we're not keeping up with the annual sort of increases, we're not even keeping up with inflation to pay our security forces, right? So, I'm just putting that out there.
So I guess what I'm saying, the budget guidance resolution. So I guess what I'm saying, in the budget guidance resolution, the bullets that were up there are still operative. From a revenue perspective, how do we, John, how do we creatively word that there's flexibility in to get to that point?
Get to what point? Raise revenues?
Yes, we have, if we have to propose an increase, how do we word that resolution? Because that's what I hear what you're saying.
Well, I think.
You've got flexibility here.
Okay.
I think the best way to do it is to not do it in isolation. In other words, if we're going to raise revenues, then we should raise revenues in light of what we're paying for. And so I think I would word it in a way that says basically we will right-size the revenue profile in order to meet the town's expenditure needs. And then as we go forward, we can define what those needs are and right-size that revenue increase to meet them.
So we have.
Jen? Yeah, so speaking of the meals tax, then let's, that reminds me that I have some questions on that then because I think you're right, like we should look at lots, I mean, any of the tax options. Although it's such a dramatic difference if you, because again, I think it's something like 60% most of our revenue, and the meals taxes are really small.
I think it's like 30, 30. I think property tax is about 30, and then the local revenues is about 30, but it's made up of a number of, but I think combined they're about 60%.
Okay.
So if you look at property tax, you're probably going to get about $400,000 out of a penny for property tax. Whereas meals tax, 1% meals tax gets you about probably $900,000.
Okay. And people who are not necessarily homeowners or residents are also paying into that because they're using our streets and our police.
And the thing with property tax is people really tend to react very, very strongly.
Strongly, yes, they do.
And again, I'm not, not saying that for your own benefit. I mean, no one's going to be happy about it, but you have to kind of consider.
The biggest pushback we get on meals tax every time is from the restaurant industry. And I just think there's an education piece there, and there's more than just our restaurants that need to have in this conversation.
So then my follow-up question to that was, for the meals tax though, do we today, don't we today allocate it a certain way and say it's only used?
I think we allocated the increase that occurred in '11, '12, so there's a percentage. I think we added a percent. And that percent was essentially related, I think, for most parts of downtown and those types of, and I think we still do that allocation.
And then, and we would obviously have the ability to just change that, right? So it's like we've just assigned what we want to have meals tax to pay.
If you all decide to change that, we will gladly affect that.
I think we should have that discussion because we're now, we're certainly about to build this parking garage, and we have the whole mechanism for downtown. We also have the part of it for the Dine on Herndon initiative, which I don't think we're still doing.
We're not really spending money on that anymore.
Right. So, I mean, I do think that maybe it's, we've got a priority change in how we're using the current meals tax as well.
Yep. And it's currently two and a half, right?
Yeah. Which is among the lowest in the, in the Commonwealth still.
It's very low for white communities in our.
Yep, good.
It is actually the lowest.
Is it still, isn't it?
Yeah, that I don't know. I believe it is.
I think, and I think it's substantially lower. I think the average is about four and a, four and a half percent. So we're, we're below quite a bit.
And I know that in some smaller jurisdictions, they get a huge chunk of their, of their budget from their.
It's huge, especially like Lexington where they have big college towns, so they try to really capitalize on it. Like a VML is a wealth of information.
I do know that when we looked at, when we raised it, whenever that was, we were at one and a half. And at that point, we were the lowest. I don't know if that's still the case at two and a half, but we're definitely on the bottom end, yeah.
A question about the Airbnb. Did we ever end up, are we allowed to tax Airbnb?
I'll yield.
Their, Fairfax County is engaged in some litigation regarding that.
Can you elaborate on that?
So, we were, I'm sorry.
Can you elaborate on their litigation?
Their litigation is a group that is litigating all issues related to the ability of a liability to regulate Airbnbs other than simply having a registration list.
So we need to wait and see how that plays out.
So I would say at this point, it would be prudent to evaluate the outcome of that litigation, if there is outcome or litigation in other parts of the country.
Do you know if there's anybody else litigating that in Virginia? Because Fairfax County is a.
I'm sure there is. I want to say Virginia.
It's a huge lobby.
Not Virginia, but there are threats in DC that I'm aware of.
New York.
In New York as well. It's all being funded by Airbnb corporate, yeah, to be honest with you.
I don't know if you saw the planning commission when they were discussing that. There was a huge crowd of people. None of them were from Herndon, but it was definitely the lobby for Airbnb. So it's a hot, hot issue.
I know, I've heard from the hotels who are on the other side of that issue. They really want us to, they want us to charge them the Airbnb guessing.
Would be the transient occupancy tax.
Yes.
We've taken a wait see on what happens with Fairfax, to be honest with you. Because no sense in going down a rabbit hole and then have our knees cut off underneath us because the courts rule against us.
So meals tax, we also have EPO, which.
EPO is, again, that is a very volatile, very volatile tax because it is reliant on, you know, pretty much, what is it, like two or three, two or three businesses make up a vast proportion?
I think like, like 10 of them make up like 70%. It's a very disproportionate, you know, top end.
And so we treat that very gingerly, both in budgeting and when we get the actuals in, because we don't know if it's going to change from year to year.
Can you tell me what we were doing with Kmart? Because Kmart's gone now. We went through a long period of no Kmart, and now new businesses are coming in.
Kmart is going, getting, we're going to have a pre-construction meeting with Sterling.
It was today.
It was today. It was coming out.
I guess what I was really asking was how much tax revenue did we get from Kmart before they went out of business?
Not a whole, I don't believe, not a whole lot. They weren't one of our top 10.
So we should be in good shape when we finish.
It should, we should see an increase given the businesses they're putting in there. LA Fitness and Sprouts should drive more business than Kmart did. As well as you're going to have three store frontages, at least two of them are going to be restaurants. So you have a meals tax benefit, you have people.
And we have that tire place going in.
Yeah, the tire place going in as well. So there is some activity, but you're still probably a little ways off until we start realizing that on the taxation side of the house, at least.
Even though they're not there, Kmart, the owner still has to pay their property tax.
Absolutely.
You don't get a free pass because.
I know, property taxes will be paid on time on part.
Are you looking for more specific guidance from us at this point than this kind of conversation?
No, the revenue guidance was the one. If you have specific items that's really sitting out there that you really want to address when we put the budget together, I would like, I'd like to have that. If not, if you think about it, you know, we still, we're still going to be two weeks away to present a resolution here for your consideration to go the following week into the public, into the public hearing. But if you have anything over the next week or two, please shoot it to me. And we'll put it in the discussion, and we'll draft it, and we can always pull out whatever you don't want in. I'm assuming the standard ones that we had from last year are still operative. And I'm assuming that we are getting some latitude if, if we need to. It's not going to be the first place I go, but it will be if we have to go somewhere to do something, then we will sort of entertain it.
Okay, so to clarify, in two weeks, we'll have an agenda item, which is the budget guidance resolution. And we'll discuss it at the work session. We can make additions, selections, whatever, from that to get it ready for the public hearing the following week.
And then public hearing will go in and you adopt what you want to adopt. And that, those will serve as your instructions to me as to how to.
So what's the first step in getting the big picture for staff to move forward?
Absolutely.
Next work session.
So if you think of anything that you want to send to the town managers for consideration.
Any questions, send them in, come in, stop by.
Email, give a call.
Whatever. Like I was not kidding, she'll, I was, New Year's Eve, Sheila sent me an email saying, hey, can we meet? And I was like, that's the best thing on my New Year's Eve. This is awesome, yeah, absolutely. Not tonight, I hope. So, yeah, so come on in, talk, whatever.
Any other comments or questions on this one as we move forward? All right, thank you very much. That, I believe, brings us to the roundtable. Ms. Baker wants to start.
I'm not used to going first.
Okay.
I could come back to you. Okay, come back to me. Okay, because I have one thing that I'm going to. Okay, Bill?
My one thing, well, two. Happy New Year, everybody. And Ice House had their last goodbye party, and it's good to see Signe there and good to see Dan in Orlando and Henry and all those guys from last time. So it's unfortunate, but in the end, I really enjoyed going there. So it was, it was a good, good send-off, for sure.
Thanks. Cesar?
So where do you want to talk about, like code of conduct and stuff?
You can bring it up right now. If it's something that's on your mind.
Code of Conduct. I mean, we just attended the VML session, which I thought was really good. By the way, you probably never want to send emails anymore.
That's what, that's what they teach you as newly elected officials.
Oh, my God. So I read what we have out there. I think it's lacking in scenarios. I think we probably really need to look at adding more meat to that. I think certainly adding a social media component is absolutely imperative. Just in terms of some of the things that bring exposure to us as elected officials, I think we need to be defined. I think it's pretty loose right now, and I just, I'm not comfortable with what we have currently as far as our code of conduct, because it really doesn't have any type of guidance or definitions.
So is that something you'd like first to have as a future discussion item, or possibly in action?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to do it tonight, but that's, that's something that is absolutely. I mean, that's what I took away. And just so I can share some notes with you, the no email correspondences was one of them. And, oh, by the way, if you are a public official and you have a Facebook page, you better make sure you never block it.
That's right.
Right? I mean, that, that came down yesterday.
Yes, yeah, saw that.
Wow. Okay, so I might just go and delete my whole Facebook page. Get out of that business. The other one I want to talk about is, just kind of like, again, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers or anything, but I think as a council, we need to own, and I'm asking all of us to have ownership on being a lot more inclusive, a lot more open, a lot more transparent. One of the things I've observed is, my look around the room, there's a lot of diversity here. You know, Herndon's over 50% immigrant community, and we should have that type of representation. A lot of people don't come to our meetings, either public or working, because it's a little intimidating if you kind of don't speak the language completely. So we need to be sensitive of that. And I think, you know, our work sessions are a great place for people to learn. I think these should be recorded, they should be televised. They do that in other jurisdictions. We don't really have that today. We do our, certainly our public hearings, but the work sessions are not. And just, again, no offense to anyone here, this is too confined, I think, in terms of being open and inviting. You get more than a couple of people attend these things. They're either standing out, you've got to, you know, bring in a bunch of chairs. So I would like us to make this work session more inviting, more open. And we can certainly do that. The other thing I want to talk about is this whole seating thing. I'm kind of like not sure how we sit, right? I mean, so there should be a standard order on how we sit up on the dais here. I get that this is kind of informal, but we should have some sort of formality. I mean, as you can tell, I'm a big Robert Truitt kind of person. So I think that's going to define us. You know, I'm uncomfortable with informality, especially as a public official. So I'd like us to adopt some of these things as a, as a council and own it. And not just talk about inclusion, not just talk about diversity, but own them. You know, if we're going to say we want to be inclusive, we want to be more diverse, we have to own that. It can't just be applied to come election time. So I'd like to put those things out for discussion. Again, just to wrap up, broadcasting for the work sessions, our code of conduct, our seating organization, our seating structure, that needs to be defined. So when do we need that?
Well, so for the code of conduct, I think that's something that certainly the public would want to know we're discussing and have some input on, so we could start that as a discussion item possibly at a work session.
Vicky's already beat you to the punch. She sent me an email.
Oh, okay. So would it make sense to have that as a discussion item to figure out, like what do we want it to say? What do we want it to do? Get some input from other jurisdictions of what's working? And then, once we kind of come together on that, then it would be an action item, whether it's a resolution or.
Well, I would suggest that you probably want to go back in and amend the code. Because again, the code would supersede a policy. So again, we want you, I think you want to go back in. And I'm going to yield to the attorney on that.
Sure. The adoption of what's in the code currently was the baby step, the first step that council in Herndon had ever taken. And I would recommend, but certainly it's something you can discuss, that it stay in the code.
No, I agree it should stay in the code because then it has some sort of.
So it would be an amendment to the code.
So why don't we staff it, do some research on it, see what other jurisdictions are doing, try to look at the touch points, the different media points on social media and the like, and then bring it to this table. We can discuss it, see what you want into it, and then at a future date, we'll come back with a ordinance amendment and then adopt it.
So do we need a vote or action item on that as a follow-up?
It will be a vote at some point, right?
If I'm seeing four heads nodding right now, then we're doing it.
Yeah, it's done.
We're doing it.
So work sessions by, by design are more informal because it's more of a discussion. We used to be at the dais, and it was very rigid, and it was hard to actually have a discussion. We have not had assigned seats in the work session because people like this in different places. If you guys want to assign.
Other than the vice mayor.
Right.
But she already made a switch.
Well, I'm not just here, but on the dais.
On the dais, yeah, that will be announced, yeah.
How do we do that?
The town clerk will be sitting out tomorrow or?
Friday.
Okay.
So the mayor determines the seating.
So where, where is that defined?
It's not defined.
Okay. So I would like to propose a seating arrangement.
For the dais? Because I thought you were talking about the work session.
I'm talking about everything. I mean, we should, not just me, I'm suggesting we as a body need to be deciding. So do I make a motion? Because this isn't really a meeting. How does that get done?
What are you trying to, what are you, yeah, what are you trying to do?
Let's take, let's take one, sorry.
I just assigned.
You were assigning?
I needed extra air. What I think what Cesar's saying is that, that he'd like us to all decide this as a body rather than have it be just one person decide. Or whoever decided, I don't know who decides, but.
Well, typically, I've decided, and I try to do it in order of, of seniority, if that worked. Sometimes it's dynamics and that sort of thing, so.
So let me put forth a suggestion. Let's do it by place in the order of the election results.
Will be one way to look at it.
So, well, I'm asking that as a, I mean, again, I, it's not a place to make a motion, but we can decide on this. So back to my recommendation. And let me tell you what that would be in my mind. So you would, if we're facing out to the audience, you are obviously there in the center as mayor. And I guess if you're the vice mayor and you have to get the gavel, she's to your.
Vice mayor's always to the left.
On the left. So I would like to be to the right. To the left of Sheila would then be Councilwoman Baker. To the right of me would be Signe, I guess. To the left of Jen would be Bill. To the left of Signe would be Pretty.
I will take that under advisement.
Well, I'm putting that to the council, to the body.
I'm comfortable with the mayor still assigning it. So I'm comfortable with that. The way we've done it before, I think is, I think there are things that the chair can do. I don't think the seating arrangement is something that all of us need to decide. I'm uncomfortable with the way we've been doing it.
It's been used as a different, it's been used in a punitive way. If someone doesn't, isn't liked, they're pushed to the outside. So I'm going to eliminate all that stuff and just give a very strong assessment.
I don't regret that.
No, I just.
But I have heard your concern, and I will take it under advisement.
So I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Well, I can tell you when Harland got struck on the far end, who's the longest, one of the longest sitting people there, it's very punitive. Same with Richard Dowler. Same with Jazz's first, yeah. So it has been kind of a punitive thing. So I would think that there should be some kind of rhyme or reason in where people are sitting.
I have no problem either way. I mean, I'll sit at the end, I'll sit wherever someone wants me to sit. It's not a thing because I'm serving the people at the end of the day.
It's not a thing because I'm serving the people at the end of the day.
I think we're a new body and we should try new things. If it doesn't work, it's...
We can try new things, you know, just like the person who gets the second highest vote normally, even, is it written that the person getting the highest vote becomes...
No.
No.
It's not, it's just traditionally what we've done. I can't think of a time when the vice mayor was not the highest voter.
It's a kind of norm that we adopt that has ever been anybody getting not the highest vote become vice mayor in town.
Not in my recollection, but I can say that it's never, ever happened.
So that's the kind of norm we are following. So if there is a norm, if there is a tradition we follow, that becomes much better. So, yeah, any way where, whether it's seniority, whether it's the number of votes that determines the seating, I think, yeah, sometimes the communication gap, sometimes, you know, people, that may have, had happened in the past or that may happen in the future. So in order to, you know, put all those rumors aside, I think it's better to go with a defined way to put people, to assign people what people are sitting, so, you know, where you understand that you are following.
Well, I think that I would like to use a combined looking at the votes and also the tenure that some people have had on council. And I assure you, I want to be punitive in my seating arrangements, so I'm sorry if that is the impression, but it certainly has not been my MO as the mayor.
So I bring that up because it's been communicated. I bring that up because we need to own how we conduct ourselves.
I totally agree.
And we have to be open to new ideas and new ways of doing this. So I think I heard, and again, we as a body, where there is nothing defined in the charter, decide as a body what we are going to do. So I heard four people say they're open to my position, so...
And I will take it under advisement. Thank you.
But I would challenge you that you don't have the authority to act unilaterally. And that is, there's nothing in the charter that says you have that authority to act unilaterally. So if we're going to be a body equaling voice, we have to, we just adopted Robert Trews' order. It's the body that decides these things. It's not left to any one person, the mayor. And sorry to be so blunt about this, but I'm a Robert Trews kind of guy. The body decides how we operate. And it's not left to the mayor. So I challenge your ruling on that and I'll do it in a public forum. So we have the votes here, we have four people in the house, but that's what the seating should look like.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, Mr. Delagula?
I'm just making sure that the point's made.
I heard you.
Pete?
So this, happy new year, no question. We just came out attending VML, very informally, and especially they try to scare the heck out of us.
Did it work?
Especially the emails and, you know, so I agree with Council Mayor Delagula on those code of conducts because I am just coming from there, you know, and actually I saw one of the cities, actually their towns' code of conduct as well. And looking at ours, we just have like four bullet points and it's very high level. It's not detailed. And especially when people are trying to, you know, look for your weaknesses here and there, and especially, you know, this is the world, digital world and social media, so how we sometimes reply all in emails, everything sometimes can become a meeting, right? So how do we define ourselves in terms of our code of conducts using social media and all those things? Because we are, we do not have particularly private life anymore, you know? What I put in my, even in my private Facebook becomes, you know, subjective where, so how do we define those code of conducts, you know, using social media, emails, text messages and all those things? I think this is time to, you know, put forth some code of conducts on that one because we have to change and I think it's a time. And first, I'm serving council, so I look forward to working with all of you. And one more thing, just going back to the election, whatever happened, whatever groups are there or whatever happened, but I expect everybody to have a very good relationship and healthy relationship and open relationship and very respectful relationship so that we can put Herndon first and work for the people of Herndon. So that's my request to everybody.
Thank you.
So, I, my only thing is, can we do the communications? You know, about six months ago, I came to with Mayor Portsmouth and I see you have brought it right up. You're a mind reader.
I'm playing.
All right, so, and there were two gentlemen sitting behind me in the audience who were from Portsmouth and I turned around, I said, "Oh, you have a great mayor and town manager and their relationship is very cool and I loved their presentation." And they said, "We love them so much." So I'm hoping that, you know...
We don't want to replicate that here because the mayor used to be the town city manager of Portsmouth, so I can tell you, there's no desire in the town manager ever to get into politics, so...
No, 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 God, no.
I was going to say, they made a good relationship, but that's how it came about.
But it was not just a relationship between them, but it was the relationship between them and each council member and them, each council member and the mayor and the mayor and the town council and the citizens and the citizen. That part is, I think, a part where we could do a really good job as council members and mayor in making sure that people feel heard and listened to and that they understand that we're trying to, that we are not trying to hide anything. We are trying to do the things that we told them we were going to do.
So with that in mind, we did talk at Portsmouth and population 9,4,000 at Portsmouth. The advisory things they've told us, I'm over time by here if you don't know, is council roundtables that occur at some frequency where we invite the public in to talk to you all in a semi-formal, mostly informal setting, and it's to talk about issues and just to increase the openness and level of communication between citizens and the council. Some of the feedback that we received from them, and we took the feedback and we also then sat down at Cass John Cassella to sit down with a couple other critical staff members to kind of, how can we harmonize this? And I'll get to that momentarily. So Portsmouth, approximate population 9,4,000. They generally have more staff attend sessions than they do citizens, but that's okay. Citizen attendance was generally those, I'm just reading the raw notes that were handed to me. Generally, the citizen attends was those that attend other public meetings on a regular basis. Still does not mean that's the way it's going to play out here. You know, they might advertise differently than we would, we don't know. We push on social media differently than they do. Yeah, there's a lot of, better word, mouth, whatever. Generally, not all council members show up to all of the functions. Initially, they required staff department heads to attend, but later narrowed that staff to direct council appointments that included the attorney, the manager and the deputy managers of, and they have two deputy managers at Portsmouth. Staff, they tried rotating staff and rotating councils, talking about, they tried various ways of having tables and rotating around and what they've learned, lesson learned, and we like this too, is the council would rotate the table, they will not make people rotate to the council. So it makes you, at least, it's more inclusive and it's less logistical of a burden. You're serving the people. Portsmouth tried setting up tables based on topics. That did not work out very well for them. Staff, their staff didn't take notes, council did. Notes were then handed to the city manager. The manager would then make requests if department heads were needed. At the end of the sessions, council members would stand and present issues that were presented to them. They were, our staff flagged a potential issue with FOIA and you'd get a request, it is a FOIA request, to how we would handle it. They have had no issues with FOIA there, so that may not bear out in the application of this. It is a public meeting.
What was their concern about FOIA? Minutes or something like that?
Well, no, if a citizen asks for something that would be tantamount to a FOIA, how would that be handled?
On the spot FOIA.
On the spot FOIA.
Gotcha.
We'd have to then make sure we separate that out, it gets back to me, so I can start running through a FOIA process and we start applying to, we start...
I don't know if that's a problem, but you definitely want to make sure you capture it.
Right, right. So we identified that, they've said that hasn't been a problem, so they are, but...
We need to be prepared for it.
But we need to be prepared for it.
Do you have a FOIA request form?
We don't have a form, it's generally, they usually come in either email or on the phone and it just gets taken and just sits processed, right? And Ann is our point of contact for FOIA with those. It is a public meeting, but there is no official public record of the meetings. They've done meetings in the evenings, they've done meetings on Saturdays. Saturdays, they would serve refreshments and sergeant-at-arms.
They had someone there just in case.
Yeah.
In other words, the least president's, because you never know, especially today. So, and again, this is conveying what they told me they did.
Sergeant-at-arms just sounds good.
Yes.
We have one at Rotary.
I worked for one years ago.
Yes, we do. We have one at Rotary, immediate past, present, president is the sergeant-at-arms.
Yes, they collect fines.
They collect money.
So some of the things that we looked at, so we thought that potentially it might be good if, you want to space them apart enough to where they're unique enough for people to show up. But if you do them every week, every month, it might get saturated. So what staff has proposed is we look at about three times a year. We would do one maybe in the spring, early spring, focus on budget primarily, but other topics can come up, obviously. Do one later before summer starts, because then summer people tune out, and then do one in the fall with the exception during the election year, which then we reserve that for the chamber to do the council, the form for the candidates. That way, we're not getting involved in politics and so we leave the politics out of it from a staffing perspective. So we would look at five times over a two-year rotation. We would, this is one thing where we would staff it with a note taker there for a couple reasons. If, let's say Sazhar's sitting at one table and you're sitting at another, you may not hear all the issues coming up at Sazhar's table and then when it wrote to you, so we can disseminate the notes, we can potentially pop, put the notes out on the web so folks can see what the issues were discussed. So I would suggest we have a, we have a clerk, not a clerk, and I'm not using an adickey, but a clerk at each table taking informal notes, not a formal minutes or anything like that, so that we can consolidate, we can disseminate, we can get it out to everybody so you see what the issues are, to open that communication up. We felt that we can staff that five times over two years without a problem. Somebody said, "Well, we should serve refreshments."
That was on the... See, that communication person understands people.
God, I have doughnuts.
And actually Portsmouth did too, but only on the Saturday morning. So this is something that we, that we can look at if this is what you all want to do. Again, this is yours. If you task us to do, it would be a public meeting, we'd have to properly advertise, but we would still then push out the social media advertisements, we'd actually look at you all from word of mouth as well and try to gem as many people in there as we possibly can to make this, you know, obviously, I will be there. Also, by having a clerk sitting at the table, if a FOIA request comes up, it will get asked and will that be our way of dealing with it right then. So we'll take care of it right away, we'll get their name, their contact information, and we'll start the process for a point. So that's kind of what we've put together.
I like it. I think that's a great idea.
And if you all decide that's what we want to do, we'll start working on scheduling.
I think we should do that.
I guess you like it.
I heard a lot of positive feedback when we had the meet and greet for the candidates. That was very well received. Quite a few years ago, before I was on council, the Diamond property developers did the best job of keeping the community informed and the community was very happy. I'm glad we were able to get the council through it out the window, but they really brought people along by letting them say, you know, making sure they knew what was going on and I think that's part of, you know, some of the concern I've heard in the community for the last few years. They didn't feel like the Comstock thing was as open because, you know, Diamond had been here and they were meeting left and right with the community and a lot of people that weren't even talking ended up coming together over that. So I think community meetings are very important.
And I also remember when we did the historical preservation guideline, I mean, people came out in droves and obviously it was because they really cared about it.
The guidelines.
Yeah. But, I mean, it just goes to show that there's a little bit of a pent-up need and you're right, if we do it every month, probably people will stop coming. But if we start developing an audience of more than just the regulars, maybe.
And would it be, obviously it would be an open forum for people to come and just find out what they're interested in, but would, do you think that it would attract people if we kind of set in? Like, we had a topic that we were definitely going to try to, like, the HPRV was something that got people to come out. So if we're talking about parks or whatever, does some kind of hook to get people to be interested?
Well, that's why the budget, I think, is a natural hook for the early spring one. And again, it had nothing to do with the fact that the budget manager was kind of doing the light work, working on this one. Then I think it was part of kind of sticking it.
And the other thing is to get them involved before it happens so that...
Absolutely.
After it happens, they go, "Wait, no one told me."
Absolutely. So, and then the other thing too is also by clerking, having a clerk sitting at the table taking the notes, that makes sure there's not a communication problem. There's a communication problem, it's something that I need to be actionable on, it's between me and my employee, not me and you all, as to how we might have miscommunicated. It would be between me and my employee, it's not we've miscommunicated, so. So I think if you want to go forth, I think we're probably going to look at maybe March for first one, would that be?
And then March, I think. Budget book together.
I'm not saying you do it.
Yeah, March would be great.
And make sure it's not during the week that whenever the Fairfax County School is out on holiday.
That's an April this year.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Well, it could be early March, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. It could be early March because we wouldn't necessarily need the, I mean, it could still be just for budget discussion, right? Like, it doesn't have to be after any for one.
Anything else and anything, that might be just a little...
It would be, exactly, we want them to have the input and, because for folks that won't come to a public hearing and they want to come to what feels more informal and...
And once we have the model set up, let's say that we do have a major issue that you want to get more input on, we can just, you know, take the model, we stamp it on another date and we run the model.
Yeah. I would like to suggest, if it's at all possible, to not always have it at a town facility. If we could work with some of our apartment complexes that might have meeting space, then maybe we could have something in there in that neighborhood so that people would be more comfortable coming. I don't know what kind of meeting spaces there are.
Or for a library.
We could do it at 1481.
Well, I'm just thinking, I know that when Opportunity Neighborhood came and spoke with us, that's what they did, when they were reaching out to the community, they went into some, this is in Reston, but they went to the different apartment complexes and HOA meetings and were in the neighborhoods and there were people that came there that would never come out to another facility. So if we're trying to be inclusive and get, hear from new people, I think that should be something we should consider.
Let's look at that.
I mean, not the first one, obviously.
No, the first one's going to be here, that's going to be, yeah, because we're going to be stepping over ourselves logistically to try to get this, get it out of the gate. But once, like I said, once we start putting the logistical elements together, if we can just stamp this, yeah. So right now, we're shooting for three times a year. We're talking maybe May, we're talking March, we're talking in the fall sometime, and then the off, every, even year of the fall, we then revert back to the chamber to do the candidates.
Right. And you might even consider the middle school and Harland element.
I think those would be good because, because here, one of my concerns, one of my concerns is parking is a concern, but also the logistics of the tables and all that stuff. They would have the logistical elements there so we could...
Great idea. So we are moving forward with, this is an idea.
Oh, no, sorry, you're done?
I had one more thing, but now I can't remember what it is, so.
Should have written it down before. All right, well, so I want to go back to something Sazhar was talking about, because I know this is roundtable and I think we went to the public hearing seating and, but regarding the seating at the work session, just from someone that's had an assigned seat for the past four and a half years, I'm happy that we have an informal seating arrangement at the work session, but I'm certainly open to, if we want to have assigned seats here, but I think an informal seating at the work session works really well personally, which is my perspective from being here for four and a half years. And I know you mentioned broadcasting, I guess my, the challenge, I think, I like it in theory, right? Because we do want to be inclusive and I know that's been mentioned and several folks talked about that during the election. I think the challenges we have to think about is this room is not wired for that, right? So if we were to have that broadcast, we have two challenges, because I've talked to Nancy about it. We have HCTV challenge, because now you have them having to work more time to actually film and record it. And then you just have the logistics of filming and recording in this room because that, our other room is obviously set up for it. I think, and then being more inclusive, you talked about, which, I like that idea. And so maybe we think about what other spaces in town could we have a work session? Because I don't think there's a ton of options. I don't like the idea of doing it in the, our chambers, right? Because I think, like you said, you guys went through that for several work sessions for several years.
Two years.
For two years. And it's not a collaborative environment where you want to have it, like, where you can all, where you can look at each other as a body. can all, where you can look at each other as a body. You know, maybe the HMC lobby, but I know there's challenges with that, because that would require staff to set that up every, every other week. I think we'd also have to ask Sergeant at Arms that whether you want that in terms of the security of that space, as opposed to the security of this space. So, I think there's things to think about with whether, if we change that, and whether, if we move to the location, does that help us be more inclusive? Do we get more folks if we move it to the, to a bigger space as opposed to what feels like this basement meeting room?
Tell you two considerations, because Vicki's are flailing at me.
Yeah.
We have the ability, and we do audio record for minutes purposes, so...
We do audio recordings?
Audio record, so that the clerk goes back and can do minutes after the fact, so we don't miss anything. That audio recording can be, you know that.
So, we have those mics, we are audio recording?
You're live right now. Just so we can...
You didn't know that?
They have been, we've had requests for the, for those audios, so nobody knows that.
Those can go on Granicus.
Right.
I mean, that's just a push of a button to get the audio out on the Granicus.
Well, there you go.
Okay.
Because I don't feel like it needs to be videotaped.
Right.
I don't know if folks feel like video is super critical, but I think if audio is what's critical, and we already have...
If council, if council wants that, we can, it's a flip of the switch to move this out of Granicus.
And that means, that's this room, obviously.
That's this room right now, because it's already wired. You're kind of, the mic comes on.
It's a public meeting, it's not, it's not a secret.
Right.
And it was done to, again, much like when we were in there, so the clerking back...
We don't post them today, obviously.
No, we don't post them today, because we've never been given guidance to do that. We get guidance to do that, well, that's a lot of page flip switch.
And is there a cost?
Yeah.
No.
In terms of, well, I mean, in terms of storage, right? So, okay.
No. Because I'll tell you what, these audio files are going to be miniscule versus our video files, which are already sorted out.
Right.
I think we should be able to do that immediately.
Do folks feel like that fits the bill of what you've talked about with having an audio recording?
Before I answer, if I may, I'm a little confused. So, someone help me understand.
Okay.
How we can decide on this and not decide on the seating chart?
I think we, I don't know, I can't speak to that. I just, I wanted to bring it up, because it felt like it wasn't resolved.
It wasn't, but I was going to leave it alone, but thank you for bringing it up. We, as a body, decide how we operate. Whatever happened prior to us reconstituting this body is irrelevant. In fact, nothing that preceded the reconstitution of this body, unless it's in the charter, is applicable. So, if we're going to decide on this, I appreciate it, and I think it's a great idea. I personally would like the televised version, but this is a good compromise.
Well, it's an inexpensive start.
Yeah, ultimately, see how it works. But how can we decide on that and not on the seating chart?
I don't think you have, I just don't think you had consensus on the seating chart.
I counted four.
That, I can't believe we're really going to fight about a seating chart.
And we shouldn't, we should, as a body, just decide how we're going to do it.
I was going to come back to that when it was my turn for roundtable. So, we'll come back to that part. Yeah. Okay. Now, I really can't remember the other...
Are you done?
So, I'm not done. So, okay, so that's good. So, I was going to talk about security and the broadcast, I liked that, and inclusiveness. So, I think, given that we now know the audio, I think, to me, that supersedes, like, moving this location, because to make it more inclusive, hopefully, we can make it more inclusive by just inviting folks. I don't know that our meeting space, even if we change it, would make it more inclusive. I'm just not sure it's a meeting lots of folks want to come to. I'm glad you guys are all here. So, I like that. The only other thing I was going to bring up...
The only person that's not a council member or a staff member that's here tonight is Barbara.
Is, right.
Our steady Eddie.
Thank you, Barbara.
Can I, can I address that one though? Because I had so many people tell me that they wanted to come, that they can't physically get here.
Yeah.
Or that it's always packed. Now, obviously, it's not always packed right now, but sometimes it is packed. So, it's, it's not negligible, but I, I take your point that, you know, it's not the best attended of all of our things. But part of that is because, and Sheila poo-pooed me when I said this to her, but if I'm, if I'm a regular citizen and I don't know any of the council members, but something...
It's a little intimidating.
It's intimid, I look in the, in the door, the place is, is full of people, some staff, some, they're all government people, and they all seem to know what they're doing. And I just say, maybe I'll just go. But I just show up anywhere all the time, so it's...
Yes, I know, but you're she...
I'm not, right. But not everyone feels that way. Totally get that. Well, I had had a conversation with someone, I can't remember if it was Bill or Vicki or someone else, about trying to make certain that we have enough seating on one side of the room for staff, because people come in and they go, it's packed and I can't get here. But these are staff members.
Right.
So, to make it really clear, there's plenty of space for people to come in and sit. And maybe we do need to rearrange it, so when you walk in, you see empty benches over here, and the staff is over here, so it doesn't feel intimidating. I never thought of that.
Yeah.
So, I do think we need a better system, because it is...
The benches back there. Another thing I've seen in other places, and I couldn't tell you exactly where, is the door, there'd be a big sign on the door, and, and it will be a, like, a iron sign that says, welcome. The public is, is wel, is welcome to enter.
Come in anytime.
Yeah. And, you know, and it's just there permanently. It's not a piece of paper that just says...
And even lights out there, right? Because right now, I'm looking, it's dark out there.
Well, we could open both doors. I mean, it's like little things like that that say, welcome.
Right.
It's like the umbrellas on the town green. Stop here and do something.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great, great...
Those are great suggestions.
I do too. The other thing I was going to mention was, everyone's favorite topic is downtown, so I think, and I know Billy and I have talked about this, talked to Mayor about this, but now that we have a new council, and obviously, we've had some closed meetings that you guys haven't been privy to, just to get that scheduled as soon as possible, to get everyone in the loop on what's happening. And I know, of course, that'll be a hot topic for the public, maybe not whether it's our March or our May one of the, what we're going to do, but obviously, getting us in the loop on what needs to be shared privately. That would be great. That's it. Okay.
Okay.
You remembered, and you're good.
All right, I was there.
I thought about the sign idea, and I didn't like that yet, so I would have forgotten that. Okay, so, I've been talking to quite a few people that have tried to talk off a little ledge, because they felt some of the downtown development, and always try to explain all the things that went on over seven years with the fire department. You know, when we, because I got talked to by quite a few people about, why don't you all let us do this, why don't you all demolition that? Well, I didn't even know. I was thinking, my gosh, how many years did that take before we got to that? So, I'm kind of talking to quite a few little neighborhood groups, try and let them know how things work, and because I've been going to meetings for a long time, when I first got involved in Land Use, I understand that it all doesn't happen at the public hearing. And the head of community development, where's Lisa?
Right here.
Oh, I couldn't see you, you're right behind, right behind Bill.
Put behind my big ball was head used.
There we go. She gave me this great outline, but what it didn't have in it, and maybe I was going to see if the town manager could help me on this, is to add to what Ms. Gillen gave Things like all the community meetings that took place, when we had community meetings talking about the downtown development, because these are a lot of, it was a great line with some of the things that happened, but there were so many more things that happened, just having lived through them from 2010 until now, that I've been involved with those things. So, if we could get something like that, and then any of the council members that wanted to have that as a reference...
Sheila, that's just the Comstock snapshot.
This is on my Comstock. No, but this doesn't have a lot of those other community meetings.
Leading up to June, because that was from June, right.
But it does talk about buying the Ashwell property, so it goes all the way back to 2004. So, it really is pretty comprehensive, so that people can see that this whole developing the downtown didn't happen, you know, in a bad...
Flash behind.
Yeah, just didn't happen last week. So, and I think things like that would be helpful when I'm talking to people that are thinking that we did something.
Sure.
I'm surprised that you're doing it.
I mean, and it's special, because I can sit there and say, well, we have this meeting, but I don't know the date. So, if I had something like that, I've, I've got something to talk to them about, because otherwise, and like, the fire station, oh my gosh, how many meetings do we have? Anybody that was involved? Because that started before I got on, and it got thrown out. It would have been great over by the Snotton Park, but the neighbors didn't want it, but I like it over by my house, so I'm glad it's still there now.
And they love being downtown.
Yeah, and the firefighters love being downtown. Okay, so that's my history thing. And were you able to get me a police contact for the young person that wants the...
Unfortunately, the chief and I have yet to talk. I was going to talk to him this evening about that.
Well, just so she'll hear what it is. There's a young person at Herndon High School that wants to be a detective or a crime scene investigator, and they want to speak to one of our officers. So, if we could somehow coordinate that, they live in the town, and they're a student at Herndon High, and they're thinking about where they want to go to college.
They should just reach out to the SRO up there. He's there every day.
Officer Murn. And they watch the SI.
Officer Murn, he's perfect. I just saw him at the middle school today.
Yeah, he's half-time middle school, half-time high school. But he's at the high school every day.
So, if...
Generally, he's there every day.
Okay. So, if you could pump me his email, I'd appreciate it, if I could get his email, and then I can hook him up with the young person.
Yeah, he should just be able to fly him down the hallway, and he's there every day.
Perfect. And I'll send the young person, as well as Murn, saying, hey, y'all hook up at the high school, so that'll make them all happy. The other thing, I would really like for us to do a retreat, and, you know, just talk about working together. I think one of the things that makes the council work best is when everyone is talking outside of these meetings, and if we're not communicating with one another on issues and only talking when we come into this meeting and the public hearing, I don't think we're getting the best product. And I really miss having colleagues that want to do that. So, I'm hoping that we can do that, because otherwise, if, if you're only talking about it when you show up in this room, there's not much thought going into it. So, if we've got consensus to work on a retreat sometime in the near future, as opposed to the far future? To the far future. And not with the other person, St. Cloud.
No, Bill and I have talked about that already.
She's on, she's on.
No, thank goodness, yeah. Because everything that I went to, there was a meltdown of some sort.
And I don't think the la, the one from the la, the gentleman from the last retreat was the guy either.
And I miss that, because of my brother.
Yeah, that was, that was good. So, if, if I can just get a sense from you all, topics, so that we can try to find a moderator that is suited to this subject matter.
Okay, so we need a list of...
You know what I'm saying, because you don't want to bring a mechanic to do your electricity. So...
Plumber to do the electricity, right? Okay, gotcha. Okay.
So, if we get a sense of what the topics are, we'll start, we'll start reaching out through, you know, Virginia State Governments and try to, try to identify a moderator.
All right, so can we send topics of interest to the town manager?
Yep.
And so, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of overlap there.
And then, I would imagine that the scheduling is going to, at this stage, is going to be on the moderator's schedule, so we'll get it as quickly as possible with the best possible moderator.
Well, you usually can't get those guys for a couple or three months, at least.
And I don't see this happening until, but even, but if you think the last one didn't happen till opening day of Woodley. So, that was dark April.
April.
That was late March or early April, because that's when LeBron was out.
Exactly. Well, the Saturday, everybody left to go to the first pitch of Woodley.
Our new optimist, baseball, yeah.
Yeah.
The three of us did.
Well, I would like to consider...
I'm a baseball guy, I know.
I know, it's okay. I think it's a good idea. I know that you are doing our orientation in a very different format, so we may get some ideas from that as well, some, some topics maybe from that. I would like to look at trying to do some evening, instead of taking up a weekend, if that's possible, at least part of it on an evening, because weekends are really tough for me anymore. And I'm just one person, but I don't want to, to miss it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask about, though. I think to Sheila, what's, given that you're proposing it, what's, what's your intent on that, or thought on that in terms of the scheduling? Because I think weeknights are also tough, if you, you know, a lot of us have full-time jobs, and then you go to a weeknight thing.
And then you're fried by the time you get there. I mean, I feel like it's going to be pretty hard.
So, and in the past, we've done the retreats, it's been like Friday night and all-day Saturday, right? Was that your intent, to still do a Friday night, all-day Saturday? Just get some thoughts on that?
It doesn't even have...
Or just all-day Saturday kind of thing?
Well, probably, we need to talk to a professional and see how, how they're...
What's the schedule line?
Because, you know, when I worked in healthcare, and we would have management meetings, and it was, it was basically on communication and trying, because you go for a while, and then the next thing you know, the four department heads aren't talking to three other department heads, and the whole business is in disarray, and it, you just can't work that way. If people aren't communicating, it's not good.
So, do you think just a Saturday, though? Which, is there one Saturday that...
It's probably, that's the Saturday you're traveling on, or something.
Well, it truly is going to be, at this stage, the moderator.
There's a moderator when they...
Moderator.
Yeah, you're going to have the...
Yeah, there. And I think we need to put in that...
And get some concurrence from them about what's effective, because if it's a Band-Aid and we're just going to, you know, meet for two hours on a Friday night, and that's not going to do anything, then, I mean, it's kind of a waste of money.
Agreed. No, 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 I, I thought last, last time was just a complete waste, to be brutally honest with you. The retreat was just...
I think it's a complete waste, but it could have been more efficient.
It was not, yeah.
Cesar, what do you have on your mind?
There's a horse, and I have to keep beating this to death. I'd like to point out the inconsistency here. We're having a discussion on what we want to do as a body, but we're not going to do We're having a discussion on what we want to do as a body, but we're not going to do something because someone doesn't like an outcome of a particular item. This is not the way this council should be operating.
I agree. I'm going to bring that back up, since it's been my responsibility, and I just said that.
But again, I just, I'm doing this because there's a perception in this town that things are not done with the consent of this body. And I heard it over and over from the people I spoke to. So I just want to point that out again. We have to be above all of that stuff. And we may not like the outcome of certain things, but four votes determine our course of action.
Sheila, and my last thing is, I did go to Nut Stop to see the current program. Very nice. It was very whimsical. It was like watching Seinfeld.
I'm going next weekend.
Yeah, so it was a show about nothing, if you ever saw that. So that's basically what the play is. And welcome to our two new people, and.
Don't expect any emails from you, ever.
You sat through that?
I noticed that when, when they send out Facebook emails, you don't get me replying at all. And I'm sure a lot of people think that, "Well, Sheila, no response." I do, Donna.
Every single person here should know, please, how many times I've told you not to reply all.
I'm not putting anything on my personal devices.
Oh, no.
It's not happening. My emails, I will not check.
That's me. So don't send me emails and reply all and expect me to reply, because it ain't happening.
Listen, everybody hates reply all, whether you're the lawyer or not.
I hate reply all. And I usually never do it, but every now and then I will.
You do it regularly.
No, I really don't. You've gotten two from me, and each time you've told me that I shouldn't. I don't reply all.
Anything else?
Oh, what?
I, before we get to the seating arrangement, I wanted to mention that a couple of people have reached out to me since they got the calendar and have said, "Hey, why is the trash different in late summer?" And I haven't, because we are looking, or not we, DPW is looking at how to make it more efficient, and they were, we got a briefing at a work session a while back that there are going to probably be some schedule changes in August, mostly because that's a month where there's no holidays, and so nobody's date would be screwy, because it's a Monday holiday or whatever. But I've just said very vaguely, "Oh, we're looking at some efficiencies and there'll be a lot of public, you know, outreach to make sure that you know when to get your trash out." But is that the right answer? Is there more detail?
That's the right answer.
Because I felt a little cagey, like I was hiding something, but we don't really know what the schedule is.
And that's for everybody here. We're still working through discussions right now. As you recall from the presentation, the big issue is that we take about twice as much tonnage on the recycle day as any other day of the week. So that was putting an enormous amount of stress on our people. We were getting people calling out sick. We were getting staffing shortages, and, because again, that's going to be a heavy lift day. So, and the other thing, too, is you get a snow day on that day or that day, for some reason we don't pick up, because we have other issues, massive winds or whatever, then we double up that day with another day, and now we have a really big problem. So we're looking at dividing up recycling into two days, and then reallocating the other four days of refuse pickup into three days, to kind of even all the tonnages out over the course of the week. And if you think about it, as we, if you look at the map of the refuse routes, it looked like an octopus, because it evolved over 30 years. Where we're doing one side of the street on Tuesday, the other side of the street on Thursday. There was no, we haven't looked at it holistically in about 30 years. So we started looking at it holistically, how can we get better efficiencies into this process? How can we do it to take some of the stress and strain off those high-peak recycling days? How can we get a second recycling day? Because by law, we have to pick up one recycling day a week. So if we miss one, we definitely have to pick it up. We can't just let it languish till next week. So we're looking at all these various things, so we are right now redesigning the routes. We hope by in spring, we want to start publicizing and doing outreach and doing door hangers and mailers and all sorts of things. And that being said, once we move into August and we actually implement, this isn't going to be hard and fast. If you put yours, if you're on a Thursday and they move me to Monday and I put it out Thursday, my neighbors put theirs out Thursday, we'll still come and get it. If you call us and just remind you, you know, Monday's your day. There's going to be a kinder, gentler transition. This is going to be a culture shock to this town. I'm quite sure of that.
Changes back.
I have changes back. But I think this is one of those things where we've just neglected taking a look at operational efficiency for a long time, and it no longer makes sense, and we have to do it.
Can I add, Bill, a question about the calendar? At least, optimally, we wouldn't have said anything until we have a lot of those details buttoned up, but the calendar deadline is such that we need to put it. So that's why we have to put something in the calendar, and so, yeah, it is.
It wasn't a complaint. It was like, "What?"
Question mark.
They just didn't understand. I was just happy somebody was putting in dates into their calendar from our.
And we'll be discussing with you as we get closer to those dates, as we get more, this comes into more focus, is Scott and Mike do their due diligence down there, working out the routes to the best effect, and then we'll be back and we'll start publicizing.
How many of our, how many of our guys are out there doing trash? Is it just two, two guys all day?
Yeah.
Who is that?
A lot of trucks.
Oh, that'd be a never-ending.
The same two guys to my house most of the time.
Oh, yeah. So the automated trucks are just the drivers, but the other rear-loaded trucks, we have at least four out every day, and two workers.
So they're out every day.
So especially in the townhouses, there are more, in a truck, more people, right?
Yes, because in the townhomes, we have, we need to do the rear loads, so you have two guys.
Automated.
And we have how many trucks out at any given time?
Four to five.
Six to eight, or six, six or seven. Five, somewhere around in that number. I mean, recycling is all our vehicles, all our drivers, so. And if we're not doing, if we're not doing, you know, residential, we're doing the cans and the run with it and everything else.
It's a lot.
Not just your homes, residences.
But things that jump out to me is, we do have several streets where we do one side of the street on one day and the other side the other day.
Like Eldon Street's one of them.
Yeah, it just, again, made no sense.
And probably new people moving into that street are like, "What?"
Rushing their cans out because we're across the street.
They never touch my kids.
So hopefully, yeah, once people get used to this, this will be efficient and give us better efficiencies. It also helps us on some of the backend stuff, because we've got some changes on where we have to take our backend to dump, to retip. And so we have some changes on that front, and it's going to help us on getting our crews in position to haul out more of this.
Okay, so I was not expecting to discuss the dais arrangement, which is why I was a little like, "Whoa." I do want to apologize if people have thought it was punitive. That has never been my intention. I had to sit here and remember what I had been thinking, but what I was going to propose and send out to you guys on Friday was based on seniority and vote totals, kind of looking at the two of those. So if you can bear with me and imagine the dais, I was looking at the mayor in the center, the vice mayor to the right, our former two-term vice mayor to the left, followed by Cesar and Signe on, however you say, Concentric, because they were the highest vote getters, and Bill McKenna and Priddy on either end. I don't really care which end, but, so it would be, what I had jotted down was McKenna, Delagula, Baker, Merkel, all, Friedrich, DeCaul. So I would like to propose that as the seating arrangement.
I'm going to be sitting there either way. I'm in the same spot, no matter what.
Well, that's right.
I think that's, I think that's good, and I think there are certain aspects of the body that I'm certainly comfortable with the mayor deciding, and that, to me, seems fair and reasonable.
It doesn't matter whether you go with seniority or whether you go with vote, I'm going to be at the end. But having said that, yeah, if you put a certain rule or order, it would be better, because it's not for now, but it's for future as well. What's the rule of order? That we follow Robert's rule of order, right? Everything is governed by, governed by a rule of order. So everything seems good to me, but still, if you go with one order, maybe like the number of votes, just to respect those people who got more votes, right, in a democratic society?
I hear that. I also think that there's something to be said for having a long tenure on the council and having been the vice mayor for two terms. So that's really the only change, is having Jen, unflanked by the current vice mayor and the former vice mayor, and then it's vote totals for the rest of the, moving out, you have the, to the ends.
That's just what Herndon does in terms of the vote total. Like, most jurisdictions don't do it that way. Like, when you go to VML and you ask, "Just talk to other jurisdictions," it's relatively unusual, but they do anything related to vote count.
So let me bring it back to the vote total. We're a pretty diverse town, and what speaks to that diversity, right? And I just think we need to respect that. And it's not that, you know, putting someone away from the mayor, but you have to think about who's looking, too. I see the television, they need to see diversity around the mayor. And that's why my original proposal, I think this is what's best for us, and I think I counted four people saying they agree with that.
And as far as seniority, as long as I've been on the council, it's never been totally by seniority, and I know.
Well, there's never been a totally rule-bound way of doing this. I think that we are a pretty darn diverse council, with however many women there are now, four women, the first Latino in Fairfax County ever to be elected, the first Nepali in Fairfax County, I think. Do you know that you're the first in the entire Commonwealth? I don't know that.
Bill, there's one more.
We just met him today. We were sitting next to him.
Oh, did you?
And now.
Oh, good, okay.
There are four in the country. Two of them are in.
Virginia.
Northern Virginia. Two of them are in.
He was introducing himself like, "I'm from the Mount Everest." And right after him, I was introducing like, "Well, I'm also from Mount Everest." But I didn't find.
But one got elected first, you were him.
He was elected in May.
Okay.
Haymarket.
So he beat Jack.
In Haymarket?
In Haymarket.
Wow.
So it's not in Fairfax.
So he can be the first in Fairfax.
Yeah, in Fairfax, yes. Talking Nepalese, there are only four people in the entire United States, three in council and one in the state delegate in that, and so only four in the entire US.
Wow. Well, congratulations. That's exciting. So when I looked around the table, I saw four people who were fine with the proposal that I just made. So that's what I plan to do, if you ask.
I, no, I'm sorry. I got a question, Matt.
Okay.
Bill said he was fine with it. Priddy said he was fine with it either way. I said I was fine with it, and the mayor's fine with it. That's board.
No, I heard Priddy say he was.
No, I said this, "It doesn't matter to me, because whatever you follow, I'll be at the end." But having said that, I said, "If there is an order to follow, then it would be the right way to do it." Simply because, I mean, to be honest with you, we respect people over us, right? So I understand by seniority, you are giving respect to the council people, but by going through the votes, you're giving respect to the public. So it's your choice, who do you want to give the respect.
I just think there's, that is a good point. Thank you. I do think that it is something to be the vice mayor twice in a row. I don't think anyone's ever done that, as far as I know, which is why my thinking was that.
Who?
Carol Bruce was.
Oh, you're right.
But it's not hard and fast, okay? I'm not saying like I'm rigid to that, but I'm just giving you a logical point or value point, so people can follow in future as well, that there is a rule that we follow, a order we follow, rather than, you know, just coming out of, you know, sometimes from mayor or whoever, right? There is a law for it that we actually follow to arrangements.
So how is it stated in the, is it stated in the charter that the?
No. No. I was just going to ask, how would council propose that whatever you do be memorialized in the future?
Right.
It can't be. We, that's my whole point. We reconstitute every election. So the only thing that states is the mayor's duties. It has nothing to do with any type of unilateral decision-making affecting for or on this body. I'm sorry to be, but I'm a stickler for the rules. I mean, I just, I'm sorry.
The only difference in the R2 proposals is having our two-term former vice mayor sitting one chair to the left of the mayor.
And I don't think that's what people thought.
I think it's going, I think this is.
But I thought I was going to sit to the left of the mayor.
Well, I'm thinking, looking at the dais, sorry.
Oh.
Sorry, I have to look at the dais.
I'm telling you, I have to.
But, yeah.
To the right.
I count four of the, supporting my seating.
Right. We, oh, Mr. Town Manager, I almost left you out.
All right, so let me just recap, so I can memorialize what came out of this roundtable of actual items for staff, okay? Just want to go back and try to miss anything. If I did, please raise your hand. You are looking for amending the ethics provisions in the code. We are going to come back at a future work session with a discussion item after we do some research and try to put some things together for, to create some talking, some discussion points, and then we can get to a potential resolution in the future. All right, number two, you're, I'm going to go on the roundtable discussions three times a year, and after the first one, let's look at schools as an opportunity to increase people participating.
And if we do schools, make sure we have Ellen Finley there.
All right, we can get to that later.
Remind me as we.
Let's all give them more actionable items.
All right, so number three, work sessions. You want to broadcast the audio, increase the lights, open the doors, get better signage, and let's look at a better seating for staff to create more openness, to get more opportunities for folks coming in to sit down. Number four, you want an upcoming work session, want a discussion on the downtown. Number five.
A closed session.
Oh, yeah.
Under what?
We don't know, let's, let us discuss that, because we don't.
We can't just discuss.
Yeah, we have to have something related to the real estate transaction in order for it to make, this to happen.
It doesn't need to be closed, as far as I'm concerned.
No, I mean.
So either way.
Right now, I mean, we can have an open discussion about where we are, what we're doing, that's all.
So we can put that on the future work session? I was thinking closed, because there is information that the new council members aren't aware of.
Is any of it, like, private anymore?
And so.
Well, we're not, we haven't closed yet, so some of it would still be, but I don't.
Bringing them up to date?
But if we can't bring them, if we can't find a reason for a closed session, then.
I have, no, meet with them privately. Here's what I do. When Richard Kaufman took over, so he can be prepared, I met with him privately on all the elements that were in closed meetings. And we can sort of do that for Priddy and say.
I just want to make sure they have all the information, and some of it is not public yet. I don't want to withhold that.
I think we need both, so.
Not just Priddy and, and Cesar.
No, I'm saying to catch up to where you already.
Things we've already, well, you already heard in the.
Things you already know, that they may not know.
They haven't heard about it from a closed meeting. Okay.
You've been to all the closed meetings.
And then we would have, yeah.
Yeah, just so I don't feel like I know.
So a discussion item for, on the downtown, and then close the move with the closed